What is your name?
Jane.
Yeah, yeah, I'm Gary Sullivan, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You can stay out there. Yeah, he opened the stage.
I had sure.
Where I moved.
Like just the process, it was just a whole.
I was there, I was there when the. I was there when the thing is hitting. That was horrible.
Oh, I'm already feeling like this.
Over. And the whole thing was probably crazy, right? Those cases there are insane.
You can't make it up.
No, we.
It's bad on TV. Gotcha.
Appreciate it though. It's a good problem.
Like I literally. Because the jury here, he said, yeah, I wouldn't have been here if it wasn't for people.
Frank Murphy, all the justice in the night.
I'd say it's good to stretch the new faces. There's been times when it was just a struggle.
And I can stand up and I object.
You can come out as part of the public.
Well, I mean, you know.
There you go.
Tax pay. And a water bill.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, that, the taxes are cheap.
Gibraltar's only part of appeals meeting is now called to order. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. And with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please see the wall.
Harris.
President.
Markham.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Defend.
Here.
And I'd like to remind everyone to have your microphones on, please.
So we need a motion to approve today's agenda. Make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need a motion for the approval of the ZBA minutes dated October 30th.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
You and I weren't there.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business. Susan Anadi. Would you like to state your address and tell us what you'd like to do?
Can I state the address and let somebody that can explain better than me? The address is three zero seven three zero Bayview.
Okay. Next.
My name is Gary Sullivan and I reside at three zero seven three zero Bayview. She wants me to do the speaking for.
Well, that's fine, go ahead.
So, so what we want to do is demolish the house and rebuild it. And this all started with the storm last year. And we had quite a bit of damage done to the house. And her parents had bought this house in ninety-nine. So they recently passed away, so she started kind of staying down here a little bit. And then suddenly we just fell in love with Gibraltar. So she, after the storm, we said, well, how about if we just move here? Which is great, but the house just isn't really conducive for our family. So we kind of kicked it around a little bit. And then we met with an architect and then met Charlie Lawler, the builder. And we decided to put together some plans and see how that went. So we tried to work with the city to see what we can do or what we need to, what we need to do to make this happen. And we just feel like if we rebuild the whole house versus make adjustments, being able to redo the whole thing, we can kind of like bring it up to today's standards as far as the flood, you know, the flood levels and kind of redo the crawl space to, you know, alleviate any potential flooding, hopefully. So kind of that's where we're at. So I don't know if you guys have any questions as far as, hopefully I can answer any questions. If we can't, Charlie, Charlie can answer some, you know, building questions that might arise. And he's a little more familiar with, you know, Gibraltar and, you know, building and whatnot, so.
The number one question I have is, can you build this home within the current ordinances of the city of Gibraltar?
With the exception of the three variances that we are applying for.
Okay. So the hardship and the reason, what's the reason that you need those three variances?
The hardship kind of is because of our family. You know, right now it's, it's, it's a one bedroom. So we can accommodate us, but you know, she has two kids and, you know, their families. So if they want to come over, we're kind of limited on space. Right now we live in Dearborn, or she lives in Dearborn. And, you know, the house is big enough, but to come down here, we just need more room. And we just need more storage space. Since there's no basement, that's the reason for the larger garage, so we can have some storage above it. That's, that's about it as far as the reasoning for it. And I think just to, just to be able to move in full time and, you know, enjoy, enjoy what Gibraltar has. Yeah, and just, and being able to redo this, we can, you know, put a generator in. Right now there's no generator, so we can kind of weather, weather a storm if we need to be in. Just, I don't know, make it, make it our home instead of a, like a temporary, like a weekend home. And that's what it originally was, was just a weekend home for her parents. But they didn't, they didn't get to see what we see. You know, they were only here on the weekends, but, so that's what we're hoping for.
The, Mr. Markham, how many years ago did they, the city of Gibraltar?
Not long ago.
Wasn't long ago.
For the twenty-five foot?
No, for the lot coverage, it used to be thirty percent.
That was around, I would say about fifteen years ago, thirteen, some, somewhere in that range. Bobian.
So we used to be at thirty, thirty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the city bumped it up to four, they went through the process and they brought it up to forty.
Yeah.
So I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you, but I'm just saying it becomes an issue when we start going over that forty percent mark.
Sure, and, and I think.
So we really need to grant a variance, we really need some good solid reasons.
And when we met with, with the architect, you know, and we kind of told the architect what we needed. You know, and basically, we're just wanting two bedrooms, you know, and, you know, our storage, you know, the, our storage above the garage, but just our second bedroom in the loft. So I think the house is going to be, I think, seventeen hundred square feet, so it's really not that big. But the way our lot is situated, we're, you know, on a pie shape and so the front, frontage is pretty narrow. So we're kind of, we have that working against us, you know, as far as the, the size of the lot.
So we have the house at twenty-five seventy.
That's, I think, with the garage.
Well, that's the only way we can consider it.
No, right, right, but I mean, the, the living space, I, I mean.
Well, I mean, we're looking at twenty-five seventy.
Okay, yeah.
Coverage.
For coverage, right, right. And that just came about with, with working with the architect, you know, we just kind of told him what we wanted. And he did have it at one point bigger, you know, we just said, it's too much. You know, we didn't want anything that's, you know, stuck out, you know, in the neighborhood. We wanted something to blend in. So the houses, the proposed house is basically, just like it is now, just a little bigger. And it's not anything, it's not anything that's super modern or, you know, it's, it fits in. And it's not bigger than any of the other houses, not smaller. So we, we feel like we kind of fit in between somewhere. And the lot coverage, yeah, I think we're three percent over, you know, it's, we tried to work with the architect, you know, and he, he just kind of, he just said that's where we're at, you know, and he, he worked with us a little bit, you know, and we pared some things down, but that's kind of where, where we're at. We don't know where else to, to try to trim it down any, to get under that forty percent. And I guess I never really understood, I mean, I've learned more now than I've ever known, you know, about cities, building and whatnot. So we never even thought about lot coverage until, you know, things, we started looking at it on the plot, you know, on the survey and stuff, and, you know, started seeing how close everything was and, you know, what are restrictions, so.
Well, the theory is, is that, you know, the people in Gibraltar did not want to have a Birmingham.
Sure.
Where you can look out your neighbor's window and look right into their house.
Right, right.
You know, and that's where the lot coverage comes into play.
Right, right, and we, we agree, I mean, we don't, we don't want that either. We don't want to encroach on any, anybody. And we kind of got the blessing from our neighbors, you know, we showed our neighbors everything that we wanted to do. And we have our next door neighbor, Steve, with us. And so we have quite a bit of room between his house and the property line. And then our property, there's, there's quite a bit of space.
He's to the right or to the left?
He's to the south. So he'd be to the left facing, facing the house.
So our minimum, a minimum there is what, thirteen-three? That's what he's showing.
Seven-two.
Well, thirteen-three.
Between the two.
Between the two houses, yeah. And it's seven-two in the front of the house, you know, kind of where the, the lot narrows down a little bit. And that's kind of where it's, what's pinching us is that, that very front of the house.
The logic, the logic of that point was to make sure they could get a, a truck or something down that, down between the houses if a fire happened.
Sure, sure.
Was the reason, the reason for that original.
Yeah, and, I mean, it makes sense, and, you know, we kind of, because at first, when we started dealing with, you know, McKenna, and, you know, at first they told us that we couldn't rebuild the house. They told us we just, we could only make adjustments or whatever. So the house was shifted, you know, kind of not in our favor, just the way it was built originally. And once we started talking with different people from McKenna, and then they, then they told us we could rebuild it, we just have to abide, you know, by the current standards. So we were able to shift the house, you know, to one, to one side, to kind of get maximum amount of space on the other side. So it would give us a little over thirteen feet with, you know, the neighbors, the neighbors setback and then our setback, it's still thirteen feet, I mean, thirteen, almost thirteen and a half feet. So I, we kind of looked around at the, at the neighborhood and I know some of the houses are older, so they, you know, they have older rules then. And not everybody has thirteen feet between the houses on both sides.
You don't have it on both sides, it just has to be on one side.
No, right, right, but, you know, some of the houses are pretty tight that, that we see and, you know, I, not to point.
The difference is, you're new construction.
Right, 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 and I understand that, yeah, a lot of them were just.
You know, they were here from nineteen, twenty-nine and whatever, whatever.
Right.
Have you considered a two-story?
It will have.
What's that?
It will have.
Yeah, it's kind of like a loft on the, on the second story.
It will have a bedroom with a bathroom.
We did.
Full bathroom.
The drawings just say first floor.
On one of the, we have some other drawings here.
Maybe, okay.
With the, it shows on upstairs, kind of like a loft with a one bedroom. We didn't want two, we didn't want two, like, full floors, you know, to go straight up, because then it would kind of look like a Birmingham, we didn't want that. We didn't want to look like we were building a warehouse in the, you know, in the, on the lot.
The ask of, the ask of twelve feet setback of the, for the street, that's a pretty big ask.
It is, and it.
That's the, probably the biggest thing.
That's half the reason I'm here.
Yeah.
I'm serious, I'm, I'm going to say it right now, it's not even the size of a four.
Hey, break. Okay, we'll go ahead and speak.
It is, and, and our neighbor directly to the north, their setback for their garage is, we would match that, that garage. And, and we noticed there's a house further down that had just, they're just completing their garage. And I don't know the exact setback for that garage, but it looks pretty close.
Yeah, that's a whole nother story.
Well, I mean, regardless, I mean, there, it's, it's, it's being built, and I mean, I, we didn't, we didn't want to do anything that wasn't currently in the city.
Right now it's, it's a very small block where you couldn't even basically touch it.
Yeah, I mean, I wa, I saw it when I stopped by and took a look, yeah.
What's it, twenty-seven feet deep now?
No, proposed twenty-seven feet. Yeah, currently I think it's about twelve or thirteen feet deep.
It's not very deep at all.
A golf cart, I think, almost goes front to back.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Not, no, no, I can think of something, but.
Mr. Lawler, you're going to speak or anything, you're all good? Would, would you mind telling, giving us your address and?
Steve Melmston, three oh seven four oh Bayview. And I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm the neighbor to the south and I came here in support. I've, I've kind of seen the plans as they've evolved and, you know, I, I'm not, I just don't, I have nothing to object about. And so I came in support just to say I don't object, that's all.
Okay.
For at least the sides, you know.
Appreciate that, thank you. Blake, would you like to speak?
I mean, yeah, sure. I don't think I'm attacking them or anything. All right, so my opinion is, is twelve foot's just kind of small. I just, I, he, he's, he's hit the nail, the nail on the head when he said Birmingham. And that's what we don't want, when you're standing there twelve feet away, I mean, that's less than these guys and they know, you look up and you're garage, garage. So I just think that that, like, if you guys are working with an engineer, I personally worked with multiple engineers and I know that they can work with some numbers, figuring out something. And I do know there's more room to work towards the water in your berm side that would allow for that to not be so.
Excuse me, you want to keep your comments to the board?
Oh, sorry, yeah, and that's it, so that's all I wanted to say. The distance, that was it.
Thank you.
May I add something quick?
Just on what he said about the berm, we are kind of right up to the berm. And, you know, I know we can't build over the, you know, we can't build on the berm, we can't touch the berm. So we're right at, we're right at the berm, currently where the house is right now. So I don't know if we can, we can't go back any further towards the water. And all the other houses, you know, we meet the rear setback with everybody else on, on the street. So I, we wouldn't want to anyways if, if we were able to, just because we don't want to, we don't want to encroach on anybody else, you know, that we have to. And it, it is twelve feet from the property line, but it, but it's quite a bit from the street. I mean, I know our property line sits quite a bit off the street as opposed to, as you come this way down, down Bayview. I don't know how the, how they determine, you know, the, the property lines.
Well, you had two, you had an iron in that phone pole, so I assumed that was the lot line?
No, no, the, I don't know why that's on the pole, I don't know if that's just the, the iron is in the ground.
It's, it's next to the pole, he put a ribbon on the telephone pole, but the iron.
But that's the lot line.
Basically, there about.
Yeah, it's, it's a few feet in further than, than the, than the telephone pole.
You can see it here on the drawing. You know, just a, just a little history is, we had exact same request, there was twenty-five feet and they requested to build a garage sideways, they wanted a setback to, I think it was twelve feet, wasn't it?
Somewhere around there.
And, and we did turn that down. And a couple of years ago.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Well, I guess because our neighbor has, you know, their garage is a side, side entry garage that sits twelve feet from.
But that garage has been there a long time.
This is new construction.
This is new construction.
Well, right, right, I mean, it's, it's been there maybe, they told us ten years, ten or twelve years. I mean, it's not been that long, but it's ten or twelve years, maybe.
Good. All right, appreciate it. So we have an option of, we can do the variances individually. We can do them all as one, it just depends.
My problem is, which you, you addressed it earlier, which is a new build. And I understand a particular house you can't cut down. However, with new builds, you can build whatever you want as long as it's under the ordinances. And I think you're obliged to try and fit the new house that you want to put on it to the property that you have as opposed to picking a house that you want. Yes, and then trying to fit it on property. And I think that's your obligation. And as a board here, our obligation is try and keep the ordinances as best we can. If you were expanding your new, your old house and it was situated a certain way and there was no way to change that, that's when we, in my opinion, we more address the variances, but with a new build, you can do, pretty much you got a piece of property, put a house that fits the ordinances.
I, I agree, within reason, I mean, like you said, you could build anything you want, but you can't. I mean, we don't want to build, you know, a, a square warehouse. You know, we, we want it to blend in with the community and, and to look nice at the same time and not look, I mean, we don't want to put up metal walls and just say, well, you know, we built it within that standard, so we should be allowed. I mean, we have cut it down some as best we could with the architect. And we've had the, the site surveyed, we've had it revised three different times trying to, trying to, you know, do what we can, you know, we're kind of limited with that berm and the way the lot is, you know, that pie shape. And, you know, we're over on the side setback eighteen inches, you know, and eighteen inches isn't much. I mean, it's without cutting, without drastically, you know, redoing the, the house, you know. I feel like we've, we've done what we can, I mean, we've, we've done a lot, you know, before we came here as far as trying to.
We get all that.
Sure, sure.
The bottom line is, you need a definite hardship, why you need to build that house, you know, whatever it is, why it has to, why you need these variances. Because we grant these variances, the next one comes in and here we go.
Right, I agree.
And so we've got to hold it to.
Something solid.
You really need it, you really.
Sure, and, and I think, I think it just boils down to, you know, our family, you know, it's, it's fine for us, but it's not fine for our family, because it's a one bedroom right now, so we're pretty, we're pretty.
Well, for the new build, it wouldn't be a one bedroom. So if you change the plans on a new build to meet our current standards, our current ordinances, then you wouldn't need variances. So that's what we're, I think, we're trying to say is, I don't, I don't see the hardship currently. If, if on a new build.
Well, without, I guess, yeah, I guess we could have, you know, went straight up two stories and, you know, we didn't want to do, we didn't want to do that, you know, and have the neighbors look up thirty feet and, you know.
That wouldn't work either.
No, no, but, but to say we, we did it within the envelope, I mean, that's, that wouldn't, we, we don't want to do that either. But to add that second bedroom, we're, we're struggling. Okay.
Understand, but.
I did a little math and I'll, here's what I came up with and you guys can talk about it. If we decreased the garage by six feet, it takes a hundred and sixty-two square feet off of his building, which puts him at thirty-nine point nine percent lot coverage, which then kicks the front yard setback off.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
No, the, the.
We're going to have, we're going to go six feet on, on that. And then the side yard setback is what it is, you need a variance for that.
I mean, we'd be willing to, you know, to tell us your ideas if, if, you know, if you said six feet, I mean.
Yeah, we're looking at decreasing the garage six feet.
It's a twenty, what is it, twenty-nine feet right now, right?
Twenty-nine. Twenty, twenty-nine, yeah, twenty-nine.
That's a big garage.
I know, I know.
I mean, I measured my garage at home and it's twenty-four feet.
Mine's twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine five.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you take six feet off, it's going to be twenty-three five.
It's still big enough for most cars.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, we would be willing, I guess, if, if, you know, as long as, as long as Sue would.
You'd have to deal with the side and the, that's.
That's not near, that's not near as egregious.
So we would still, if we did that, we would still need the side setback.
And you'd need a six-foot, uh, uh, front yard setback.
Right, and the six-foot front yard.
But we're still looking at a new build as opposed to what we adjusting an old house. And it seems to me, unfortunately, that a new build, you should be able to.
Fit it in.
Fit it on that piece of property.
Well, we.
Let's back me one more second.
Sorry.
Just for their hardship, they've been to McKenna and they've drawn this blueprint four times. The original house was askew, four feet to the property line.
Yeah.
So the original, so it made it very hard to make and maneuver, they shrunk, 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 shrunk. So they've incurred much cost to turn the house and they're abandoning all their foundations in order to do this. So there is quite a hardship for that.
Still going to abandon it either way.
I, I, I wholeheartedly understand. So we're just trying to broker a deal to make this thing sell and still for tax base for Gibraltar and help everybody out.
If we decrease the, the garage, you said we would fall into the thirty-nine percent.
Thirty-nine point nine percent.
Thirty-nine point nine, so.
You would need a variance.
We would comply, we would comply with that.
Lot coverage variance goes away.
Goes away.
Right.
You still need a six-foot front yard setback variance and you're.
The eighteen inches for the side.
Then you need a two, a two-foot.
Two-foot roughly, yeah.
Rough variance for the side yard setback.
And, and that's only for, really for just that front corner, because by the time the house goes in the, in the rear of the house, we're, we're at nine, I think it's nine-two or something, or nine, nine-seven maybe, on that rear.
I'm sorry, we would, on the, your front yard setback, you'd need a, a two-foot variance.
Two-foot.
So you need a two-foot variance on the front yard setback, two-point-eight on the side yard setback and the lot coverage would go away.
Right.
It's still askew to the thing, so it's a very small piece of two-foot.
Yeah, I mean, it's not two-foot running all the way to the back of the.
And because of the pie shape.
It's a pie shaped lot, so the two-foot setback's only that little piece right there. But it goes to nine foot seven back here.
Okay. And that's Steve's side, yeah, okay.
And he can't drag that in off the, drag that in.
You can, but it's a lot easier to build a square house than to build a little sliver, I think.
No.
Steve, Steve's all for it, so that's why we channeled it that way.
You couldn't, there's no way to bring it in eighteen inches there.
They can, because it's a new build.
It's a new build.
You can suck it in any way you want.
We, we did, we asked the architect and he said, you know, it would, again, he would have to redo everything and he said it would change, it's going to change some things.
When you went to the architect, you showed him that we, you live in Gibraltar and we have these certain setbacks.
Right, right. So I guess, I guess we're, I guess we're just hoping for that because of the, we're just hoping for that two feet, I guess, or foot and a half. And, you know, if we, if we agreed to reducing the garage depth. And because it is only.
Let me ask you a question, just, you know, we're getting down to not much, but.
Yeah.
Front yard, two foot and side yard lot coverage.
Because it is only a few feet that, that it encroaches over that side yard setback.
You know, we're talking two and three feet. I, you know, I.
Not horrible.
It's not a disaster. I agree, I, you know, I.
Generally, on a, on a new, on an old house, we'd be sitting in the house, you know, it's two feet.
Okay, it's for a generator.
I just don't see why you can't make it fit. That's, that's where I'm at with it. It's, it's a brand-new house.
Well, you know, we tried originally, we tried to just raise the house, you know, make it taller and spread out. But because of that, the way it was situated, or it currently is situated.
We see that.
Yeah, so we were, we couldn't do anything with it, really.
Right. But if you gave the architect the setbacks, and the architect did his magic, is it possible to come up with something?
Anything's possible, absolutely. Have they really, really exhausted a lot of options, and incurred a lot of cost to get it to what they think works? The neighbor blesses it.
Yep.
And we're only asking for a sliver of the two-foot extension. Within fifteen feet, it's back within.
Minute ago, it was twenty-nine-foot garage.
No, right, right.
Well, we took the six feet off of that.
Okay. But that, but that two feet on the side of the house, you know, like he said, by the time you go back ten or fifteen feet, we're, we're within that.
You get where we're at?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I know exactly what you're saying.
And even with taking the six feet off the garage, there's still another variance, there's still two feet difference again, correct? So we're still not even to what it should be, right, to code.
On a new build.
So I feel like you push the limits in a few different areas.
It's a lot easier to change a line on a drawing than it is to, you know. But I know you've gone through it a number of times, but that's how architects work, they go through iterations.
Right, right. And he said he would, you know, but it just, it's more cost, it's more cost, you know, and he just kind of.
So let me ask you this, just being honest. Affecting your living, the two feet, or if we shrink the house a foot on each side of the house, it's really not gonna affect your living. It's just the cost of having to redraw the plans again.
Well, no, no, the architect made it sound like that, that it, things would change, as far as, you know, the, the size, the size of the rooms, and the way, the way they're situated, the way they're situated, right.
So instead of the living room being fifteen feet, it's now fourteen feet. I mean, is that a?
Well, if it was, I, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Or, or, or is the fact is, you're just sick and tired of going to the architect?
No, 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 we're, no, no, we're, I feel like I'm on, I've been talking to so many people with, you know, architects and, and planning commissions and different things.
It's the nature of the house.
No, sure, sure. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not complaining about it. I mean, I've learned a lot over this thing. And I agree with everything you're saying, as far as setbacks, and, and I respect all those things, because I, I wouldn't want to be living in a Birmingham either, you know, with some of these houses that are just tall. And, and the way our house is proposed, it is basically the same house that we have now, just with, without doing a full two-story. You know, it kind of, it won't look, it won't look like, you know, a giant house on the small lot.
The elevation doesn't look bad at all. I like the look of it, but it's, it's not, it's not, every moment. It doesn't fit the property.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, not.
At this time, is there any public opinion? Let, just Steve went for it. Jane, did you want to say anything?
I'm happy to answer any questions. I did submit a written report to the board, and I just would highlight that it has to meet the five standards laid out in the ordinance.
Good. Thank you. All right, guys, so the issue is, we're really down to a couple feet. It's a new build. We can shrink it down. I mean, they can shrink it down, and no, no variances needed.
I, that's the way I see it.
I'd like to see another iteration. Tell you the truth, I built a simple house, and I bet you I went back to that architect ten times.
Yeah.
I just think it's a new build.
Possibly broker a deal to say that you'll give the six-foot variance for the garage if they meet that side yard setback?
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-five feet.
No, no, you said if we took six foot off the garage.
That would put us to a two-foot variance.
A two-foot variance, would you grant the two-foot variance if they fix the side yard setbacks?
And we're back to a new build.
That would be our only.
The problem with this, a new build.
That would be our only ask, then would be the front yard setback, because we would be complying with the lot coverage and the side yard setback.
Then they wouldn't have to go to ZB again after they do the, you know, then they're two months' salary.
Yeah. I'll be honest with you, and here's the issue. The board looks for hardships, you know, and what is that hardship? And we're not hearing one, so.
Well, I guess the hardship is, 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 no disrespect, but it's an opinion. And we feel like, you know, it's a hardship, because we.
If you can't park a car in a garage, it's a hardship.
Sure, and it's, that would be a hardship for us. Maybe people that don't park in the garage might not look at it as a hardship, and that's their opinion, and I respect that. And some people might say, you know, they need three bedrooms, and, you know, we're only asking for two. So it's just, it is, that's our hardship, really, and the, the lack of storage, because we can't have a basement. So, you know, we need some storage space, and, you know, above the garage is like where we're, our only hope, to get that, to get that second bedroom.
And if they reduce the garage six feet, it will be behind the neighbor's garage, which is out further.
Which.
Meets code.
You know, yeah, meets the code, and, you know, whatever that garage is, you know. You know, I don't think you're supposed to have two garages on a piece of, on a lot anyway.
Well, and I guess.
How that got there, but.
And I guess, you know, the one down the street that, that's almost completed, you know, they're, I don't know what their setback is, but.
Do me a favor, don't mention that one.
Well, I mean, it's, it's for our, for ours, I mean, it's.
Can't look at precedence on different.
Yeah, we have to kind of look at.
It's been your property.
Well, sure, but for us, for, to, to say that, you know, it's, I see it's been granted before, or, you know, because other, like you said, you can't grant just any variance, because then other people are gonna say, you know, us too. And I guess, I guess that's where we're at with the garage. You know, we're only asking for a few feet, you know, if we cut it, cut it back.
Can I also just say, a couple of the houses on Worth, I believe that's the street, that's across the street from the Dairy Queen. Is that worth?
Yeah, yes.
There's a lot of newer houses right in that first section there, and they're not far off the road there either. You know, I drive around, and I'm trying to take everything in to see, you know, my parents bought this place in nineteen ninety-nine. And it was just a cottage for them, just to come casually, whatever. Unfortunately, I lost my parents ten months apart. And this was a piece of them that I want. So I'm just trying to make it to where I can live here, is all. I'm not asking for, sorry. It just means a lot of importance to me, and I know you guys can't, I don't, I'm not crying because I'm crying to get you to do whatever. I'm just telling you that. I've been trying to do this, and I'm trying to meet with, I cannot talk with them. And I even had, which is Carson, said if they asked my opinion, I won't, I would okay it. He said, I don't know if they will, but Carson said that he would approve what he saw.
Who's Carson?
Well.
He's inspector.
But he also said that, you know, like you said, that you're either, you're either pass or you don't pass. So it's not, it's not a matter of an opinion, it's just, it's, it's a matter of.
I'm sorry for your loss. And, but those houses, I know on Worth, did not come in front of zoning board, because they were conforming when they built them. Now, I don't know what easements are over there or anything like that, but I know they didn't, they didn't come here.
There was no variances.
Yeah, there was no variances.
We've been on this board for.
Couple of weeks.
I've been on thirteen years, and they were here before me.
I think we're going on twenty-five, yeah, thirty.
So can we broker it, if they conform on every side, would you give them the variance for the garage if they knock six feet off the garage? You think that would be acceptable?
I'm still having a problem with the new build, and it just seems to me that it can be shrunk.
Doesn't cost more, it doesn't cost more to change it.
No, no, but they, they need the distance of the garage to park a car, so they're.
Oh, I understand that.
They're shrinking it from twenty-nine.
To twenty-four.
They're no cars, twenty-nine feet long.
No, 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 but if we shrink it to twenty-four, we're still, we're still asking for a few feet, a variance.
What's the variance at twenty-four? Knocking six feet off.
You need an eight-foot variance. If we take six feet off the garage, that leaves us with two feet.
So you need a two-foot variance for the garage. Could we do that?
What's the hardship?
If I may, um, if you don't mind, I'll step up to the podium.
Please.
I think there's a good opportunity here for everyone, just to discuss what a hardship is, what a practical difficulty is, and what the requirement is. So I know the board is familiar, but I'm just, I'm new here, so I'm gonna take the opportunity to introduce myself and kind of just provide some context in terms of the requirements. Practical difficulty, a hardship, cannot be self-created, created, it cannot be for personal reasons. It's something due specifically with the land, because, as you all know, the variance runs with the land, it doesn't run with the property owner. So, you know, a difficulty, a practical difficulty would be strict compliance with the zoning standards would unreasonably prevent the landowner from using the property for permitted use, or would render conformity necessarily burdensome. The particular request, or the relaxation of the ordinance would provide substantial justice to the landowner and the neighbors. And the plight is due to unique circumstances of the property that is not shared by neighboring properties in the same zone. And the problem, again, is not self-created. So just from a very basic, these are the kind of zoning requirements across the state, as the state's zoning enabling act says them, those are kind of the things that we have to meet. And I'm saying this for everyone's benefit in the room, just so that we all are on the same page about what a hardship means, what a practical difficulty is. And I'm happy to provide any other context or answer questions, but for the furtherance of this conversation, I thought that might be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So I guess the, you know, just to say, you know, the hardship that, you know, if we reduced it to, you know, what do you say, twenty, twenty-four-foot garage, I know it sounds big, you know, if, if, right now, that sounds big, because we have a one-car garage. But, you know, we have a golf cart, too, and we want to put everything in the garage. We don't want to park anything outside of the garage. And, you know, we just recently moved here, so everything that we see, I mean, we know what we're moving to, so we're, you know, we're not gonna say, you know, they shouldn't park boat trailers, they shouldn't park jet ski trailers, and, you know, that's, that's, we're moving into that, so we know what we're getting into. But we don't want that in our driveway. You know, we, we respect anybody else that, that wants, that's just how we are, you know, as people. So we just want to keep everything clean and kind of tucked away.
So I guess I'm just gonna say, not to cut you off, so, so you want to keep the garage at twenty-four feet, so twenty-four feet.
Twenty-three and a half.
So you pulled the, the difference off the back of the house. I mean, just, it has to be shrunk. That's where.
Yes.
That's where I'm seeing it. I just can't, I can't get on board with the hardship. I'm sorry, I just, I, I just can't see it. I understand, it's a lot of money, it's taxes for the city, it's you guys' process. But the, the new, the new plans just don't fit the lot. I think that's where everyone's hung up on.
And I think the hardship comes from the shape of the lot, like we're.
No question.
You know, if we were, if it was a square lot, we wouldn't be here, you know, but we're, you know, she has sentimental ties to that, that particular lot or house, so.
We support, we understand that.
Yeah.
Understand that. It's just that, it looks like you could get what you want with a different drawing. It looks like you could actually modify these drawings in this house. And conform. And it doesn't cost anything, it doesn't cost, construction's what it costs. Changing lines to get what you want that fits is, is, is not that hard.
Sure, sure, and we understand that part, and we will do the additional cost, because if we reduce the garage or anything, you know, we'll have to go back to the architect. And we're just basically asking for that couple of feet in the front, and just that, that, literally, two feet, you know, and on the side. And it's, and because of our neighbor, he has quite a bit of space, you know, we still have thirteen, thirteen feet between the houses, you know, and it's, that's, that's quite a bit between the two houses.
Good. All right, thank you.
I also do have, I did show the neighbors the drawings, and I do have five signatures of neighbors that.
I mean, do you have a piece of paper saying they approve it? Oh.
Jeff, I have a question for, to help me with the minutes. I'm not following the math for the front setback.
Oh, okay. That's probably because I didn't do it right.
I do.
So I took twenty-six, the garage is twenty-nine.
Five and a half inches.
Five and five.
And I took six feet off of that.
So that would add.
So that came to, uh, so we now have a garage that's twenty-seven by twenty-three and a half.
So there's tracking six feet from the variance plus.
Six hundred, six thirty-four.
But the original request was to allow a reduced front yard setback of twelve feet, so that would become eighteen feet.
Oh, yeah.
It was, the variance requested was eight feet. The proposed setback would be twelve feet from the road. So if you take six feet, take it six feet further back, then the proposed setback becomes eighteen feet with a two-foot variance.
Isn't it, what's, what is the setback? Is it twenty-five?
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
I get confused, so I put it in this table for my own.
You know, I guess I, you know.
I understand what's at stake, but it's gotta fit the property.
It's a new build.
If they came here with that drawing, we'd probably be okay, but they didn't come here with that. Those are big, it's a big ask.
Are we good, Katie?
Yep.
Okay. Maybe you worried me there.
No, I, I had the wrong number in my head.
I was a little tired.
So it's twenty-seven foot.
Oh, thank you.
The current garage request is twenty-seven feet wide by twenty-nine feet long.
Correct.
So we take some, twenty-seven feet, you can get two cars in a golf cart, and they're no problem, side by side.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah.
So that's.
That's not, it's, it's the depth, not the, not the width.
But I'm just saying that you're trying to get two cars in a golf cart, right?
Yeah.
You can do that in twenty-seven feet.
Right, right.
With a lot more room.
Right.
It's twenty-seven feet.
No, I know, I know, that, that was, that was the idea, that's why we.
Okay. Well, then twenty-nine feet long, I mean.
I mean, we're conceding for the, you know, for that.
That's a big garage.
It is, and, I mean, we're.
It's a big garage.
We would, you know, we would be open to reducing that if we, if we can get that front yard setback. You know, if we reduce the front of the garage by six feet, and then that would take it down to the twenty.
Twenty-two.
Twenty, whatever it is, twenty-three, five.
Good. Well, we need a motion, whether to pass it or deny it.
And do all, the whole package?
Just do the whole package.
I make a motion that we deny the variance due to a new build and lot hardship.
I support that motion.
So the motion is to deny the variance due to new construction on the existing lot?
Deny all three.
Deny all three variances. So your vote will mean that you're denying the variance. When you're ready, you take roll.
There's no further discussion? All right. Harris?
Yes.
Markham?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Tefen?
Yes.
Tefen?
Yes.
The variance is denied, we're really sorry.
Well, we want you, keep at it, don't stop, don't stop.
But thank you for coming, and we're sorry, just when it comes to new construction, it's tough.
If you can get something that'll fit, will make you happy, I guarantee it, I guarantee you can get something that will fit there and make you happy.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
This time, any public comment? Any table to refer to items? Need a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.